To go? Is everybody ready? I know I'm ready. What's that?
Nope. They might have a couple.
To start here, for the Gassett hearing in Rochester, we've already been at two Gassett hearings. We had one earlier this morning in Durham that went really well. And then we had one in Dover that went really well as well. And so I'm Joe Kenny, District One Executive Counselor. So I represent all the way from Pittsburgh all the way down to Durham, which is about three and a half hours. So anybody who wants to come on a trip with me and see New Hampshire, you're more than welcome to be my passenger. So the Gassett consists of the Executive Council along with the, you know, Department of Transportation. So it's the Governor's Advisory Commission on Intermodal Transportation. And so it's been around since 1986. And so then Governor Sununu said to the Executive Council, I'm giving you additional responsibilities to help out with the 10-year highway plan. So this process starts towards the beginning of the year with the Regional Planning Commission, working with DOT to come up with their priorities with regards to the 10-year highway plan. And they create a draft that in turn comes to the counselors. And we set up our meeting dates and we're probably closing in on 20, you know, meetings that we've had thus far. And we'll finish them off sometime in November. And so I think we'll have a total of 26 hearings around the state. And so I have one after today in Farmington at 7:30. That will be my last hearing in District One. So we basically take input from the public with regards to, you know, transportation priorities. And but one of the things that gets us here is the state law, RSA 22899 in RSA 240, which basically requires us to have, you know, the 10-year highway plan process in public hearings throughout the districts. As you know, we have some of our projects that have been kind of taken out of the 10-year highway plan because of financial constraints. I think our presenter, Toby Reynolds, will kind of explain that as he goes along. But at this point, I'd like to introduce to you our Assistant Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, Dave Rodrique, who will introduce the DOT staff.
Thank you, Counselor. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's David Rodrique. I'm the Assistant Commissioner and Chief Engineer for the Department of Transportation. With me is-
Yeah, Toby Reynolds. I'm the Director of Project Development.
I'm Lloyd Harrison. I'm the DOT and the project manager for the 10-year plan. And I also like to mention that Bill Watson, Administrator of Planning and Community Assistance, is online, managing our online folks for this session.
And I'm Denise Sherburne with the Bureau of Planning and Community Assistance.
And Denise?
I'm Julie Sartaro, Playing and Community Assistance.
Hello, I'm Andy Devan, CIS.
All right. So, and Loretta?
Yeah, Loretta is very good.
Great. So thank you all for coming. And Toby has a presentation for you to kick things off.
Okay, thank you, Dave. So the first thing, first thing on the slide is there's a link to our website where there's a lot of resources there for you to check out. There's a, there's a link to the book, the 10-Year Plan Book. It has all of, all of the projects in it, in the draft plan. There's also maps and other presentations available there as well as this presentation if you'd like to, like to look at it further. Also on our website is a link to the comments portal where you can leave a comment up until November 6th. Somebody couldn't make it, or if you think of something later, you can always go there and leave a comment. It'll, it'll stay open until November 6th. So here's an outline of what we're going to go over today. We're going to go high-level funding overview. A, then most of the presentation revolves around the draft 10-year plan strategies. We'll have a brief discussion or I'll explain what the TAP program is and where we're at with that, the Transportation Alternatives Program. We will hear from our regional planning partners. Colin will do a brief presentation and then we'll get right into feedback and questions. So here's a, here's a high-level look at the schedule for the 10-year plan. As the counselor mentioned, we start in the fall of 2004. We are about halfway through in the hearing stage. And we hope to have a signed 10-year plan by the summer of next year, summer of 2026. So high, high-level funding overview. And there's a copy of this slide to my left there on the easel. This is a good look at all of the different funding sectors that the DOT has some sort of oversight of. These represent about a $4.5 billion plan over the course of the 10 years. In the, the top three sectors, federal highway, turnpike, and state make up about $3.2 billion of that 4.5. And airport, rail, and transit make up about $68 million of the 4.5. So taking a look at those bottom three wedges on the graphic is aeronautics, rail, and transit. The aeronautics funding is mostly federal funding with state funds to match the federal funds. These funds are used to, on 15 eligible airports around the state to do runway and taxiway improvements, lighting improvements, runway obstruction improvements, and those kinds of projects. The rail funding is, there's no federal funding in the rail funding. The rail funding is collected from rail operators who lease or who run over the state's rail lines. And so we use those funds to do inspections of the rail lines, like bridge inspections. We also do minor drainage improvements and improvements to the rails in ties when they're needed. The last piece of this, of the, of the other modes is the transit. And like aeronautics, the transit is mostly federal funded. And, but it also does have state match to match those federal funds. This, this funding is, that supports three main programs. One is local transit. So transit services like Coast, Concord area transit, or Wildcat Transit. It also supports regional bus service like CNJ Railways, Dartmouth Coach, Boston Express. And then lastly, it supports our regional mobility services, volunteer ride service programs that help deliver rides to elderly and disabled to appointments or just to get groceries. So the important thing to note about these funding modes is they have very specific uses, eligibility uses. And generally, funds can't be transferred between the different modes. So to look at the, the other three wedges of the, of the funding plan, the federal highway, turnpike, and state, some high, high-level trends that we're seeing or issues that we're seeing is that revenue is relatively flat for these. For the federal, state, and turnpike, we're seeing operating costs and project costs increasing. And we need to reallocate some of our state funding to pay debt service on a loan we took out to finish I-93. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. These things are leading to a general reduction in the number of projects in this draft 10-year plan. And we're recommending that no new projects be added as a result. So as we look at what we want to include in this, in the draft 10-year plan, the, one of the, kind of the, the two core focus areas would be maintenance and preservation of our pavements and bridges and our safety program. And so the, we've seen really good improvements in our pavements over the last 10 to 12 years. And we've also seen the overall red list bridge count continue to decline during that same period. We also want to continue to maintain our other core assets that are in service on our roadways, things like guardrail and culverts, signs, sign structures, signals. All of these programs with the safety program account for about $150 million per year as part of the 10-year plan across all three of these federal, turnpike, and state funding sectors. So to dig in a little bit deeper into each one of those, into the state funding, what things that have, are worth noting or that will change, is that current funding for the state section is supported by the road toll or the gas tax. And revenue from the gas tax has been essentially flat. And it's mostly due to more efficient vehicles. It's not that the volumes have declined, but that vehicles are going further on a, on the same tank of gas than they did, say, 10 years ago. We also, like I mentioned, in Senate Bill 367, established an additional 4.2 cent gas tax to support a loan that the state took out to finish I-93 from Salem to Manchester. That was in 2014. The way the loan was structured was that debt service on that loan did not need to start until I-93 was completed. And I-93 was essentially completed last year. So between 2014 and last year, the revenue that the state has collected on the 4.2 cents, we've been able to invest that in rural roads and bridges. And that's one of the reasons we've seen a good increase in the condition of pavements. And we've been able to bring down the red list bridge count for both local and state-maintained bridges. This $20 million per year that we've collected with the 4.2 cents now needs to be redirected to pay our debt service on that loan. So in order, what we're recommending so that we don't lose momentum for the condition of those assets is to reallocate about $16 million from the blue section, the federal highway section, to do, continue to do maintenance paving in, in bridge, bridge replacement or bridge preservation on those state and local bridges. So that, those are the changes on the state funding section. For the federal funding, it's a, it's a little bit more involved. Take me a few more slides to get through the federal piece. The bipartisan infrastructure law, which is the federal law that distributes funds to all of the states across the country, including New Hampshire, comes to an end in September of 2026. Because of this, we need to assume some level of federal funding out to the end of this 10-year plan, which goes to 2036. We're recommending that we extend funding at our current level for, for this fiscal year at $235 million across the entire 10-year plan. Additionally, every two years when we do the 10-year plan, we need to recommend an inflation rate. Currently, the inflation rate is 3.7%. We're proposing to increase that to 4.4%. And this is an exercise that we go through every two years where we look at a rolling 10-year average of construction projects that have, that have bid to come up with this recommendation. This will add about $93 million to the federal program. The indirect cost rate is a, is a rate that we can collect from Federal Highway Administration to pay for things that are not directly related to a project expenditure. You can think of it as like overhead, but it's for things like our financial group or our audit services, some of our environmental and right-of-way services. We've seen those costs increase. And so we're proposing to increase that by 2%, which adds about $47 million to the federal program. We've also seen 22 projects that were, we had planned to be, that have funds committed prior to the start of this next draft plan, or 2027, that have been delayed for a number of reasons. To account for those projects moving into this draft plan, we need to include about $130 million for those projects. And we've just seen the overall cost of projects increase as we advertise bid projects. We take, we look at the bids, we analyze the bids, we apply those bid prices to projects that we're working on in design. And incrementally, those projects have increased as a result of increased bid prices, increased construction costs. All of these factors has led to about a $400 million overprogramming of the federal program or overbudgeting of the federal program with the projects that we have in the current 10-year plan. So the next couple of slides I'm going to go through, how we're going to bring that overprogramming to a more manageable level. So like I mentioned earlier, we want to focus on maintenance and preservation, keeping things that we have in service in a state of good repair. And that serves, that goes for the federal program as well. There's also mandated federal programs included with the federal funds that we get. Things like the Transportation Alternatives Program, the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program, and the Highway Safety Improvement Program are three examples where those are very targeted requirements for what you can spend those funds on. And therefore, we need to continue to maintain those programs as well. These, these programs contribute about $1.36 billion to the overall plan over the 10 years in our, in the federal program. We also, like I mentioned, we want to continue to bring down the red list bridge count. And so any bridges that are in our plan currently, we propose to continue to move forward with those bridge projects in the draft plan. Individual LPA projects, these are local public agency projects where the state and the municipalities partner together to do a project. These are important projects locally typically. And we're not proposing to remove any of those projects from this version of the 10-year plan. So last, the only thing left in the plan to look at to bring that programming, overprogramming down is about 88 individual projects, we're calling it. And they total about $684 million. So to dig into those 88 projects a little bit further and how we came to the, the list that we have for inclusion or to, to remove, is we first established that we wanted to remove about $300 million to bring our overprogramming down to about $100 million. This would, this distributes to about $10 million per year over the course of the 10-year plan. That $10 million is more manageable as projects move, are funded with other sources, or delayed. We have flexibility to move projects in and out to be able to utilize all of our funds. We looked at those 88 projects and we ranked them with two criteria. The merit of the project, meaning like the overall benefit to the transportation network, how big of a safety benefit is it? And, and other things. And then a risk, a risk factor. And it's, it's a financial risk factor is what we looked at. Because when we start investing money into a project using federal funds, there's, there's rules against stopping work on those projects. And it creates financial risk for the state if we do that. So those, after going through that work, we bucketed the projects into projects that are either in, funded at their current level to move forward in the draft plan, projects that are delayed, meaning that they're going to stay in the, in the 10-year plan. The engineering and right-of-way is still funded, but we're going to remove the construction funds and projects that we recommend to be removed from the plan. So this is a summary of that work. And I'm going to stop for a second and just explain this map. If you pick one of these up at the table, this is a 25-mile radius around the meeting location. So any project that's shown on this map would be part of the 88 projects that we, that we were looking at for the in-delay or out. And on the back of the map is three, they're color-coded. The green is projects that we recommend stay in. Blue are projects that we are recommending be delayed. And then the orange is projects that we recommend be removed from the 10-year plan. So the summary of this work is here. We recommended the 39 projects stay in, funded at their current levels. The 15 projects be delayed, so they stay in the plan. But the construction is removed, about $200 million in those 15 projects. So they're fairly significant projects. And then we're recommending that 34 projects be removed from the plan. The other thing worth noting is that whenever we do the 10-year plan or in the past several cycles of the 10-year plan, the last two years of the plan that are new, we typically would budget $60 million for regional priority projects to be added to the 10-year plan. That's part of the, the Regional Planning Commission's work to bring those projects forward to the DOT as priorities. Because of the overprogram and because of the projects that we're proposing to take out of this plan, of our current plan, we're also recommending that we don't add new projects to, to this version of the 10-year plan. So that takes care of the federal. So the last piece here, the, at 3 o'clock is the turnpike funding. It's important to note that the turnpike funding, the, excuse me. The turnpike is an enterprise system. It's supported by revenue that's collected via tolls. So any revenue we take in through tolls, those funds need to be used to support the turnpike. They can't be used on other roads outside of the turnpike. The turnpike in New Hampshire is I-95 from Massachusetts to Maine, so all of I-95 in New Hampshire. The Spalding Turn, Spalding Turnpike from Portsmouth to Milton, also Route 16. And then the Central Turnpike from Massachusetts up to Concord, which is made up of the F.E. Everett Turnpike, up through Manchester, and then I-93 up to Exit 14 in Concord. Actual revenue on the turnpike has been lower than we projected. We saw a big dip during the pandemic in the revenue from the turnpike as traffic volumes went drastically down. They, they did start to bounce back. And our projections of how much they had bounced, would bounce back have not materialized. And if, and the revenue has sort of flattened out over the past couple of years. We're seeing operating costs in the rehabilitation and reconstruction program on the turnpike go up. We've seen, we're seeing those costs go up. The R and R costs are related to, it's what the turnpike uses to do their ma, their preservation and maintenance. So all of the paving on the turnpike, bridge preservation work, guardrails, sign structure improvements, that's all part of the R and R program. We, they've seen those costs increase. So the only thing left in the turnpike program to take a look at to stay fiscally constrained is their capital program. Very similar to- is their capital program, very similar to the federal program. But on the Turnpike program, there's essentially, they have three major projects that we're taking a look at. One is the Nashua-Merrimack-Bedford Project, which is the expansion of the FE Everett Turnpike from Nashua up to Bedford. We're going to continue to work on this project, continue to complete this project, but the completion needs to move out so that we can spread the spending over more years to match the revenue that we're seeing. The Bow-Concord-I-93 Expansion Project from I-89 in Bow up north to I-393 in Concord, we do not have the ability to fund the construction of that project at current revenue levels on the Turnpike. We're going to continue to fund the engineering on this project through the public hearing, scheduled for next year, and assuming that we don't, that we do not do the expansion project, there are a number of bridges in that corridor that are on the red list that need to be addressed, and therefore, we've budgeted $75 million as part of this plan to do those, to address those bridges. Lastly, is the Manchester-I-293 Exit 6 and 7 Project. Exit 6 is the MSG circle, very similar to Bow-Concord in that there's no money to fund the construction, and we will continue to fund the design through the public hearing, again scheduled for next year. There is one project at that Exit 6, southbound interchange and interim safety improvement project, that it is included in the draft plan, and that's to remove the northernmost southbound on-ramp, move traffic to the southernmost southbound on-ramp, and improve that southbound on-ramp, both acceleration and merge distance to make that safer. What we've heard in the past and what we continue to hear is those two projects are needed, mostly from a safety standpoint, there's many interchanges along both of those projects, they were built many years ago with different traffic volumes, and also, we've seen a sharp increase in congestion in the Bow-Concord corridor. What used to be a Thursday, Friday, northbound, and a Sunday, southbound congestion problem has now, it happens nearly every day in both directions in that corridor. So as part of these GACIT hearings, we're looking for feedback on a potential revenue enhancement for the Turnpike or toll increase. With a toll increase, we would be able to fund the construction of both of those projects. We would also have room for a larger safety program within the Turnpike to do, to look at narrow medians and provide barrier where appropriate to convert more toll facilities to all electronic tolling, similar to what we've done on the Spalding Turnpike, and also to create a Type 2 sound wall program, which would be a butter petitioned sound wall program for construction of sound walls along the Turnpikes right-of-way. Last slide on the Turnpike is that we haven't seen a system-wide toll increase since 2007. Order of magnitude, we're considering about a $1 increase at the major plazas, so that would be Hooksit, Hampton, and Bedford. And just for comparison to other toll authorities around the country, is that right now, in New Hampshire, user cost per mile on our Turnpike were 32nd out of 32, so we have the lowest user cost per mile on the Turnpike when compared to the other Turnpike authorities. With the proposed raise, we wouldn't be the lowest currently, we would move up to 26th. So we would, overall, we would still be very low when compared to other Turnpike authorities. Okay, so that takes care of all of the funding piece of the presentation. I'm just going to talk one slide about the Transportation Alternative Program before I turn it over to Colin, is that every four years or every other cycle of the 10-year plan, we do a Transportation Alternative Round or Tap Round. We solicit applications from municipalities for this program. This is one of those mandated federal programs I mentioned. We have $33 million budgeted for this, in this Tap Round, we received 30 applications totaling $50 million, so we took those applications in and we reviewed them and ranked them, and we're putting forward 17 projects out of the 30 applications funded at the total budgeted $33 million as part of this draft 10-year plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Colin.
Apologies for having my back to the audience. My name is Colin Lentz, I'm the, there we go, the Principal Transportation Planner at Stratford Regional Planning Commission, here to talk on behalf of the commissioners from our 18 municipalities. They are our board, and they come to talk about regional issues from housing to, in my case, transportation. So as part of the 10-year plan process, as was mentioned, we kind of start the process by soliciting projects from our municipalities, we get engineering support to develop those projects to get them kind of funding-ready, and our municipal representatives rank those projects to be submitted to DOT, and we submitted a list of three projects back in March of 2025. As Toby mentioned, those projects are not included in the draft because of the lack of revenue. Two projects in Madbury and one in Middleton, the one on the screen here is at 155 Madbury Road and Town Hall Road, where we are hoping a fatality won't happen, plenty of crashes and an infamously local intersection, I'm sure others have ones in their communities, but we want this project to move forward as quickly as possible, because safety is sort of a through line in all the work we do. You can see on the left-hand map is all the fatal crashes that have happened since, between 2023, going back to 2013, and then the serious injuries are on kind of that heat map on the right, there are a lot more of those. New Hampshire is a Vision Zero state, that it's kind of a policy that zero is the only acceptable number of people to die on public roads. So that work will slow without additional funding support for DOT and their programs. It's not all bad news, just shy of $26 million of new projects, six of them moving forward in the 10-year plan, that come through dedicated funding sources like the Highway Safety Improvement Program and State Aid Bridge. The one on the screen is at US 4 and Madbury Road, that's a safety project that will bookend one of their corridor projects, and that's the project on the right in Durham, the Madbury Road project that starts, it's their Complete Streets, it starts downtown and goes up to that roundabout, they've been making a lot of progress on it, and that tap project will help them finalize that project. We'll be up in Farmington at 7:30, and you will probably cross that part where they want to put in an improved pedestrian crossing right in front of the town hall. We have two projects in the region that are part, that got caught up in that group of projects where the construction funding is delayed to the tune of $62 million, a project out of Northwood Nottingham, and then the 108 Complete Streets project that goes through Dover, Somersworth, and Rochester, that is a needed corridor improvement and an expensive one, and so that construction funding is delayed until we can find additional revenue. Last, a group of five projects that were kind of in that group of standalone DOT projects, they all happen to be safety-related at intersections, and that just sort of falls into that group of projects that need to happen before, before the intersection gets a worse crash history. So on behalf, I'm here on behalf of our commissioners, I'm not the decision-maker, they asked me to come and advocate for additional revenue generation in terms of a short-term, some short-term measures that reduce that $400 million gap, and then a long-term, sustainable, equitable approach that keeps up with those costs that keep going up to maintain and improve the system. They specifically wanted me to advocate on behalf of public transit systems that are important for economic development and quality of life. Currently, transit providers are not eligible to access revenues under the gas tax and tolls, and they wanted to advocate for transit to access those funds to support their service. Thank you very much.
Okay, real quickly, and then we'll get right into your comments, is just a primer as, before we get there, is, do we have our priorities right, is one of our questions, having maintenance and preservation being at the top of our list. Are there questions on our approach on how we removed projects? And are there concerns with a toll increase to support the Turnpike projects? And I'll leave this slide up there, there's other ways to leave comments, is that you can write in your comments to the address shown there, you can email at that address, William Watson, and like I mentioned at the beginning, you can access our website to hit the comments portal, which all of these ways to leave comments all become part of the record that we gather up and provide to the counselors at the end of these hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby, for that presentation. So we'll go ahead with the question period of the part of the program, and the first person who would like to speak to us would be Brian Taylor of Freedom.
Hi, Brian Taylor, how are you, Freedom? And my question is, if the... Do you want to talk to the mic? Oh, excuse me, thank you.
I'm Brian Taylor of Freedom, Carroll County, and my question is, if a red-listed bridge is not on the current 10-year plan, how does one get it into the 10-year plan?
Want to answer that, Commissioner?
Yes, sure. So we have a pretty robust tracking system and what we would call Bridge Management Plan for all of our bridges. That Bridge Management Plan is online, I can share the link with you after the meeting, and it will show all of our red-listed bridges and what priority they are for us to take care of in some detail. It's, I also want to be clear, depending on the bridge, the, all of the projects are not shown in these handouts, all of the projects are shown in our 10-year plan book, and it is possible that the bridge you're concerned with is in this book unless you've already checked that.
I believe I have.
Okay, we'll talk, we can talk after, thank you.
Excuse, is it a local bridge or is it a state-owned bridge?
It's a Route 25, it's an east-west corridor bridge.
Okay, great.
Just inside the main corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker would be Owen Bastille of Abel, New Hampshire.
Which microphone do I? This one? Okay, yeah. I don't have too long to chat, but, because I've got to catch a bus, but I'm here representing Abel, New Hampshire, which is a disability advocacy organization, and we work closely with the coast bus system, we have contacts there, and they wanted to make sure we had a chance, like Colin Lentz, to advocate for funding for public transportation, because there's been a number of cuts to sort of the funding, state and federally, and so a lot of our routes had to have certain routes and bus systems get cut, and there's a lot of people with disabilities who are non-driver, I'm a non-driver myself, and we all, and certain routes, if you don't have routes, the routes to there, they can't get to work, they can't work, and there's a lot of issues to that, but what I wanted to ask was, I know that there is a program, a state-run program that is called Let's Keep New Hampshire Moving, and I wondered if, one, you guys had heard of it, and two, how that program would be affected, because they're working on creating a cohesive system of collating all the transportation resources together in one place, and potentially also providing alternatives to those who have none.
So that's, that's great, I'm taking my cue from Rad here in the audience who knows a lot about our transit system, and Rad's indicating that we currently don't support, that program doesn't currently support any state or receive any state or federal funds, is that true, Rad?
Right.
But we do have a number of systems and programs to help people connect. We have, as you probably know, mobility managers in the different areas of the state, and it would be my assumption that they are plugged into this program and working with you to make those cohesive trips. So I think indirectly, we do participate and support your group.
And would those, the salaries for them be affected by this, this 10-year plan?
Right, there is no current planned reduction in funding, but I want to be very clear, most of the transit funding is federal funding. There's about 5% of the funding becomes state funding to match some of the programs.
Are there any other ideas you, that have been floated to increase state funding besides the Turnpike revenue?
Right, we have heard a number of suggestions through this 10-year plan process, if you stick around while Rad testifies, you might hear another suggestion that's been floated.
Unfortunately, I have to catch a bus, so I'll have to head out, but thank you.
What bus are you going to be on?
12, 12 South.
12 South, is that Coast?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But, but I ride both Coast and Wildcat.
Okay, great, thank you. Eric E.B., is that, am I pronouncing it right?
You got it right, that's one of the few I've heard.
Okay.
I'm here, I'm a city traffic engineer for the City of Portsmouth, I missed a meeting in Greenland last night, so I live here in Rochester, it's easy for me to come here tonight, but I'm here to advocate on the Portsmouth Traffic Circle project. That was in the 10-year plan, is being proposed to be removed from the plan. Not only is that the number-one traffic issue in the city, that circle with the accidents and the traffic backups, but it's also the number-one priority for Rockingham Planning Commission. The traffic at the circle backs way up on approaches on every leg, and it's causing problems to the residential neighborhoods nearby, a lot of the traffic avoids the circle by cutting through the residential neighborhoods, it's been a lot of concern for many years. The city has been doing all we can, we actually have been awarded a CMAC grant to remove one of the traffic signals on the bypass to help with the congestion there. We've also just finished a multimillion-dollar project in residential streets as traffic calming projects, and provided another access road out to the bypass from the neighborhood to try to help avoid truck traffic and cut-through traffic from going through the neighborhoods. But really, the major piece in that area is the traffic circle to address the traffic congestion and accidents that have been going on for years. It was identified by the state over 20 years ago, and there was a conceptual plan put together, that plan just needs to be updated, you know, seeing what is the full, long-term solution for that traffic circle. At the time, it was decided to, you know, fix all the seven bridges over the bypass instead, which was absolutely needed, you know, they were all red-listed, so that was a great improvement, but we still need that final piece to fix that traffic circle, so advocating on behalf of that is for the City of Portsmouth. And then, as a citizen of Rochester, I fully support increasing revenues in any way possible, whether that's gas tax or, you know, other revenue sources, so I definitely am supporting that. It has not kept up with inflation, and we're woefully short on funding for projects. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Next speaker would be Jeff Donald at ACT.
Good afternoon, Councilor Kenny, good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Good afternoon to the rest of you, DOT. I am the Regional Mobility Manager for this region, that got referenced earlier, so that's who I am, I also oversee TriLink, our regional transportation call center. Every year, I reach out to both the partners in TriLink and to the other transportation providers in the region, like things like Future Insight, Grand State Independent Living, Wildcat, just everybody, and try to figure out how many trips they're providing, so we can sort of figure out what's happening in the community. can sort of figure out what's happening in the community transportation world every year. This past year, nearly 70,000 trips were provided, sort of at the, sort of community transportation, social service, healthcare level. So that includes Wentworth Douglas Hospital, Coast ADA Para Transit, all that stuff. Coast Buses and Wildcat Transit together performed over a million trips last year. And then the Medicaid Brokerage System provided about 115,000 trips. So these agencies are providing a lot of service and are really integral to our transportation network. And they're trying to serve the region's transportation needs for healthcare access, for employment, for shopping, and just for people living their lives. And I know how important these services are because our office regularly gets thank-you notes. We get a door full of Christmas cards. We get house plants. We get $15 checks just to say thank you because I really needed that trip to the doctor. This stuff is really, really important. So, you know, for some of these trips, it's literally lifesaving as it's dialysis three times a week. For other riders, it's just what allows them to have jobs, even though they can't drive to get themselves there on their own. So our existing agencies are doing all they can, but demand has steadily increased. I have the numbers that show that. It's continuing to increase. And as you're crafting the future of our transportation network, I just ask you to bear in mind the non-drivers in our system and their needs as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you, Counselor. Good to see you again. It's been maybe an hour and a half. And members of DOT staff, commissioner. To sort of, so I'm Rad Nichols. I'm the executive director at Coast. I'm also the chair of the New Hampshire Transit Association, and I sit on the State Coordination Council for Community Transportation. And I speak sort of from all those seats. I spoke earlier in Dover about all we do in the state. I won't repeat myself in terms of public transit, but I really wanted to highlight some of the solutions that I pointed out and, and really, so I talked about increasing the toll fees by a dollar. I talked about increasing gas tax by six cents with one cent going to public transit. And I talked about increasing the local option fee from $5 to $10 to help communities raise funds they need for their own transportation projects. I'd go back to the, to the, to the increase in the gas tax and that one penny to be dedicated to public transit. And that would be truly transformational. That would generate about $8 million a year to support public transit across the state. Currently, in the state budget, we're at $1.5 million a year. Last biennium, we were slightly lower than that. Thank you, Counselor, for your help in getting us to that point, as well as the Senator, for your involvement. Much appreciated. Much appreciated again this time around. And, and I, I talked about how much ridership has increased on the public transit systems across the state as a result of that state investment. $8 million would be truly transfer, transformational for all of us and, quite honestly, stop some of the bleeding that's going on as the federal government and the mix of dollars we get from the federal government shifts and requires more non-federal match. So, and I'll leave it at that, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Rad, for that presentation. Owen, is Owen? Did he already? You spoke already. Okay. Well, I had 15 cards at the last one, and I only have five here, so I was just trying to recreate speakers. So is there anybody else who wishes to speak with regards to the ten-year highway plan? Raise your hand and speak now. Senator Gray.
I'll come up.
Yeah, we'll get you on camera.
Since you guys all this extra time. One thing that, that, you know, Coast is the envy of the state, okay? I mean, you look at a lot of these other towns about getting people to appointments. I mean, the welfare department here in Rochester, you know, just sings their praises all the time because they can give them a voucher. They don't have to give them cash. They don't have to give them anything else. You can give them a voucher, and with that voucher, they can go to various places. And I think that there's a Fair Free Saturday coming up. I think it's two days from now. Two days from now, yes. You need more people to ride transit, okay? Part of the problems that you've got would be eliminated if more people did that, okay? So I did want to shop that out for you. And, you know, we are always looking for other ways. Certainly, the gas tax, okay, which is actually called the road, road toll, is not sufficient to do the things. And with more cars being electric cars, there's fewer and fewer gas sales. How do you take care of those electric vehicles? Do you put a tax on the charging stations? Do you increase, what we have right now is a fee, if you're an electric vehicle or a hybrid vehicle, you pay a little extra when you, you register your car. But that hits the New Hampshire people. It doesn't hit the people who come from out of state. The toll, yes, that'll hit the people from out of state, but those people who are commuting back and forth every day because they have to live further and further away from their job, and that's the most efficient way, it also hits them. So, you know, there's an awful lot of things out there that could be solutions, but when you look at them, you have to weigh how that affects the citizens in New Hampshire, how it affects the citizens from out of state, and the fairness of all of that. So, thank you for coming to Rochester.
Thank you. If I, if I may. Go ahead, Commissioner Rodri.
Yes, thank, thank you, Senator. And I'm so glad that you did mention that about the tolls here in, in Rochester especially because we know people from Rochester North, if they're traveling south of Hampton, have to drive through three tolls. So if they're commuting, three tolls down and, and three tolls back. There are so many different scenarios that, that we could run, but one that we have talked about, there's already a discount for New Hampshire Easy Pass users. One of the things that the department would favor is a frequent user discount. So if somebody goes through the tolls 30 times per, per month, they don't pay for additional trips during the month. So there's actually a scenario, if you go through five, five days a week, your tolls could actually go down with a toll increase in that frequent user discount if you drive through Rochester, Dover, and Hampton. So we have some, we have some levers we can pull to, to help with those as we talk about this.
I've heard of that.
Well, there, there's so many, we don't want to get ahead of it. What we want is, is to know from the public if there is support for the council to bring this forward and recommend this as a solution.
Well, the governor has to put it on the agenda, and the council has to decide what they want. The council decides, but we'll see where the governor stands on it as well. We do have some work down in Dover at the General Sullivan Bridge. That's going to be demolished. Contract went through the last governor-council meeting, 28.5 million to remove that bridge. So that's been an eyesore for, for us who have grown up on the seacoast or traveled the seacoast. They're going to start removing that, I think, next year or start plans on it later this year. So that, that's a good news story. So I bring that. Anyone else would like to provide any more input? If not, we'll close this meeting and we'll be off to Farmington for our last hearing in District One. So I appreciate you all coming out. Thank you again.